Good evening, everybody. We will call this regular, this meeting of the City Council, it's our regular meeting for the month of June, to order and ask the clerk if she would call the roll.
Roll call, Mayor Brock.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Garrett. Councilmember Ferguson.
President.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
President.
Councilmember Stallings.
President.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilperson Garrett by reason of personal business. She is out of the city this week on mission trip.
Second.
Right, the pre-planned.
Pre-planned mission trip, and we all were aware of that. So, the motion to excuse was her second?
Yes, second.
The move is second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next item is, we would invite those of you in the audience to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item would be approval of the agenda, which I'm not even sure is on the agenda. We have a couple of changes under the consent agenda. The minutes from May 23rd will be removed from the consent agenda because they are not yet available, and so we can't approve what's not here. So, we will, that would come off the agenda. Consideration of replacement of the lawnmower under action request will become item F. Is there any others that I missed, Councilmembers?
No.
Any other additions, changes, or?
No changes.
Are we just talking about the changes or additions?
To the agenda.
Okay, not the consent agenda.
No.
Okay, nothing further.
Okay. Could we have a motion to accept, to approve the agenda as, with those changes?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Consent agenda, are there any items listed on the consent agenda that anybody wishes to be, have taken off and brought off for further discussion? It's primarily the study session meetings and the other minutes that we had listed on the agenda.
Not to remove, but I do have a question in terms of, there's some typos that I have not yet had an opportunity to bring to the clerk's attention. I mean, I'm happy to approve them with, and I'll forward some typographical errors.
And I have a question on the distribution report.
Well, the dispersment report is separate.
Okay.
We'll be coming to that shortly.
Okay.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
So then, would you move the approval of the consent agenda with the inclusion of the typographical corrections that were submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Move the seconded and discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next is the consideration of the dispersment reports, and as per usual, I can get to them. Page 1213 of your packets. First dispersment report is for the period from May 1st through May 15th of 2017, in amounts totaling $45,914.38. The second one is from May 16th through the 31st of 2017, in amounts totaling $427,668.35. And the, there is detail behind those that the council has that they're in their packets. Is there any discussion of any of those items? Questions or whatever about any of it?
Mine is on the department report, I guess.
Well, that's, no, those are dispersment reports.
Okay, so I do have a question. Do I ask it at this time?
This is time to ask it.
Just on page, let's see.
Looks like 17.
On page 7, or 17.
Seventeen.
I am just, the Cadillac asphalt road patching. I'm concerned with it because there was road patching on my street, and all of it's not patched anymore. So, I'm not sure if we're expecting these patches to last more than a year, more than two years. What are we doing about it? That's my concern.
This is, this is a purchase of the road patch.
Okay.
It's not anybody's doing, it's not, in other words Cadillac asphalt did not come in and put down the, we bought the materials, and our DPS does the pothole filling.
So, we need to figure out if it's the material or is our DPS?
Well, I think it's a well-known fact that cold patch, which is typically what's done this time of year for temporary patching, doesn't hold up well. You're lucky if it makes it through the season that it's put in, and that's one of the reasons we do what's known as, and other times we'll do what's sometimes called hot patching or whatever, where you make a much more permanent seal there, but.
Well, what happens is that the hole gets deeper. I mean, it just seems like it's a little rougher.
Right, that's why, that's why they often are filling the same hot, the same hot hole, pothole several times during the course of a year, so.
Okay, so that's.
The question really is, you've got the good question, though, and that is, should we do something else other than the method we're using?
Right.
And we'll ask, I think that that would be within the purview of.
Our engineer?
The City Administration to talk with our city engineer and our DPS contractor and determine if we should be using a different approach, and what, if it is, what should we do.
That's all I want.
And how much is it going to cost initially?
What is it going to cost, and how can we avoid that?
Because this is pretty cheap, you know? This is really not spending a lot of money, but it's not holding up very long either, that's the problem.
We could move our roads out of the state of Michigan, that would help.
Well, we could get Mr. Moss to get us more money up there. Seeing as he's in the audience, we'll pick on him. All right? Any other questions on the dispersment report? Ian?
No.
Maria?
No, nothing further, thank you.
Okay. I think that, then could we have a motion to accept, to approve the dispersment reports?
Have some of.
Second.
So moved the seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next is considering the approval acceptance of the various departmental reports, which I think begin on, in your packets on page 30, and probably goes through page 44. It includes the Parks and Recreation Report, the Police Department Report, the Downtown Development Authority's Report, the monthly permits that have been issued for the city, DPS Department Public Service Report. Particularly, I would call your attention to a memo from Mr. Ken Martin, which deals with brush chipping. We have our contractor, has been accompanied by the name J.H. Hart Urban Forestry, who has got a contract under the agreement with SACRA, our South Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, to come through and do chipping. You know, they follow along behind the, supposedly at least, on the same day as the trash pickup, and they are supposed to chip up branches and so on. They have given notice, official notice, to SACRA that as of the end of this month, they will no longer provide that service. The city has a city of, has a separate contract with that group for going along in our right-of-ways and trimming up where tree limbs are down too low to the sidewalks, things like that. Their contract calls for them to remove those branches and take them away. So, they will continue that service where we assign them to go, but they will, after the end of June, they will not be doing the chipping. We're told that South Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority is seeking to either work something out with our, the trash pickup, so they will actually provide that service or either under subcontract or something else, but they have told us they intend to replace the service. But just put the citizens on notice that come the 30th of June, if you put a brush out at the curb, it may not go away, you know, real quickly. We'll follow up as diligent as we can in trying to get SACRA to commit themselves to what kind of replacement service we're going to have, but just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Are there any questions or comments about any of the other departmental reports that were included in the package?
I know Trina's not here, but the fitness center, the new equipment for the fitness center.
Will be in after July 1st with the new budget year.
After July 1st?
With the new budget year.
Okay.
Because it was approved during the budget session.
Yeah, that's the only reason I don't go there to work out, is I don't hit them real quick.
Right. You heard them, right? Okay. And then the DDA, when you, you have three vacant board positions to fill, I just have some questions on.
Where's Sean? Is that true, there are three positions to be filled?
Currently, yeah.
Currently.
Yeah.
So, do you look at just the folks that are currently in the DDA, or do you go outside, look at our new business owners to see who would, who else would be interested? I'm just interested to know how you're going to fill those spots.
You better, the guy from the control room will tell you to go over there.
Good evening. Yes, we have three current open positions, the one position being the City Administrator's position. There are two more available positions. We have had some applications come in that the mayor and I will sit down and review, but as per the DDA's bylaws, we are required to at least have 50% or 51% or greater representation of the board being stakeholders in the district. So, this means business owners or property owners. But we are allowed to have residents, they're just not allowed to be a majority of non-stakeholders in the DDA district.
Okay, so my concern is just making sure that the new business owners are aware that these positions are open, or they just start inviting them so that we could have a more balanced DDA.
And we've done.
I think DDA is doing well. I just want to see the new business owners included.
Right, and since I began last year, we've been very successful in adding new members to the DDA. So, we were successful in recruiting Major Property Owner Sam Sernow to the DDA board. We've also recruited two other individuals successfully on the board, so unfortunately with the passing of Tom Bainbridge, that created another vacancy.
Okay.
But I think we've done a lot more in the past year to revive the DDA board so it can effectively make quorum and meet than what has been done in prior years.
I agree, you're doing a good job. I just want to make sure our new business owners are aware.
Certainly.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about any of the reports, departmental reports?
Nope.
Hearing none, could I have a motion to accept the departmental reports?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. At this point on the agenda, we reached a time on our agenda when we invite members of the audience who wish to be heard, this is your opportunity to be heard, and on any issue that is not listed on the agenda, in other words, items, action items that are on the agenda, those will come up a little bit later in the meeting, so. First one I want to call on, though, is our State Representative, Mr. Jeremy Moss, who is in our audience, and came for the explicit purpose of regaling us with what's going on in Lansing.
Yeah, you can brush me off the stage at any point if it's just too much to bear. But council and mayor and administration, I really appreciate the opportunity to give an update. You know, we're approaching really the quarter mark of this term, and I wanted to at least talk to you and of course our residents and our audience that's watching about what's been going on maybe the last six months or so in Lansing, just to give an update on the major issues. I would say that we've probably hit on three major things so far this term that I can kind of go into a little bit of detail about. But first, I'll say that I'm starting my second term. I was elected by my colleagues to serve as our Democratic Whip, you know, to make sure that all the votes are in the right spot and make sure that we have our caucus united. And then, as council knows, last year I was the Vice Chairman, which is the top-ranking Democrat of the Local Government Committee. I kept a seat on the Local Government Committee, having served as a City Councilman in a neighboring community, but I'm now going to be serving as the, or I have been serving as the Vice Chairman of our Regulatory Reform Committee.
The neighboring community is Southfield.
Yes, that's right.
I know no one knows that, but just got to expose it publicly.
That's right, I'm a Southfielder, right next door.
That's right.
So, I still serve on the Local Government Committee, I also serve on the Elections and Ethics Committee. So, our committee work keeps us busy, and by us, I mean Jason Hoskins, who's my Legislative Director, who has roots in Lathrop Village here.
Wave to the crowd.
Jason can wave to everybody.
Jason has, Jason has been very good about keeping us up to date, too.
Yes, Jason gives you a weekly update via email, and if any residents have any issue that they need to kind of reach out to our office, and you can't get ahold of me, Jason's there helping out our operation up there. So, the first major vote that we took, truly, on the very first day of voting, was House Bill 4001, and it's the first bill that you can introduce. There is no 4000. When you file the first bill with the clerk of the session, that's the bill number, and it was an attempt by the leadership of the House of Representatives to repeal the income tax here in Michigan. So, I mean, it's a good talking point to say, you know, we did away with a major tax in Michigan, and I guess you could go to some folks and say that we've reduced taxes if this bill were to have passed, but the reality is, is that we in Lansing have, and we are debating now and very likely to pass tomorrow, our $55 billion budget. It sounds like a big number, but all but $10 billion of that $55 billion budget is restricted. Either it comes from the Constitution and we have to pay obligations, or it comes from the federal government and it's just a pass-through from the state onto the county or to the locals. So, all but $10 billion is our general fund, which funds roads and schools and public health. Now, the income tax of that $10 billion, the income tax pays for $9 billion of that $10 billion budget. So, to repeal the income tax is to say, okay, maybe you'll get a little bit of savings from your annual tax return, but every other aspect of your quality of life is going to be impacted if we don't find some sort of replacement. And that's what House Democrats, including myself, were saying during this first day of voting. How can you repeal this, this, this major source of funding for revenue sharing for roads, for education, without some sort of replacement? So, we saw that plan then revised after we brought up these legitimate concerns. Okay, the leadership said, instead of going from 4.25% of income tax that we pay now, maybe we reduce it down to 3.9. So, again, it still was kind of a nonsensical approach, because then you're, the average Michigan resident is going to see not that much savings of a minor reduction in the income tax, but it's still going to impact major things that the city needs to pay for through revenue sharing, or that people expect in terms of the services that they receive from the state or their county. And so, with the reduction of the income tax from 4.25% to 3.9%, as was proposed in the final iteration of 4001, a person making $35,000 a year gets a savings of $10 a month. So, it's about an extra cup of coffee a week in savings. So, it's not real tangible dollars, but because we have a flat tax in Michigan, the people at the top, the people making $35 million a year would get $100 savings, or 350, pardon me, $35 million would get an astronomical savings, and then $350,000 a year, if that was their annual savings, they would get $100 of savings a month. So, because of our flat tax, the amount of the reduction definitely impacts those at the top, and I don't see that we would feel it from the people that I interact with or from the people that live in my neighborhood. So, I joined almost every House Democrat in voting against this plan, and it, also we had support from many, many Republicans. And so, for the first time since about 2001, a bill that was put up to a vote in the House of Representatives actually failed. They didn't count the votes, or they weren't able to get a large bipartisan coalition of people to pass something in Lansing, and it failed with a 52 to 55 vote. So, that was, that was the first day of voting. So, that kind of set the tone for the legislature moving forward, and it's been kind of a little hectic at times, definitely passions are heated on many issues. We had 12 Republicans who were probably more middle-of-the-road that stood with us on that issue when that vote came out, and I don't think that they have been so much lockstep with the House leadership to push other controversial issues forward. So, the next major thing that we actually took, you know, took a hold of, actually came out with a big bipartisan support, and that was to expand the Freedom of Information Act in Michigan. And that's something that I've been passionate about, and it's been something that I've been driving since I got elected as State Representative. Right now, if you're curious to how the village operates, or your county government, or other state departments operate, you can fill out a Freedom of Information Act request. And, you know, if there's a construction on Southfield Road and you want to know what the timeline is or what it costs, you go to the mayor, or you go to the clerk and you say, you know, I want to know.
Pick on the clerk.
I want to know, I want to know the meeting minutes, I want to know the cost, I want to know the timeline, and by law, and the city clerk does comply and does a great job, the city clerk will provide you that information. But in this Freedom of Information Act, the state legislature exempted itself and exempted the governor from any form of transparency. And as a result, we ranked dead last from the Center of Public Integrity in terms of ethics and transparency in Michigan, because we don't operate in Lansing under the same rules that we force our local units of government to operate. So, I've been working with a bipartisan group of legislators to pass an expansion to the Freedom of Information Act to include the governor's office and the state legislature at long last. We're one of only two states that exempts the governor's office and state legislature from the Freedom of Information Act. So, it's kind of like we're out of, out of the universe in terms of where other states are on this. So, after a big contentious vote, you know, in February that actually went up and failed, I guess we found our kumbaya moment, and these bills, which I was one of the primary sponsors on, passed unanimously.
Good.
Which was a very exciting moment. Unfortunately, as they went from the House into the Senate, the Senate Leader has stated that he doesn't support them, he doesn't see a need for them, he hasn't heard from anybody who wants this type of transparency in Michigan government. So, you got 108 members of the House that obviously represent everybody in Michigan who said, you know, this is a good plan, and then you have one Senate Leader who basically has said, well, nobody in Michigan wants this. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect. So, the more that I can rely on the residents here to contact the Senate Leader's office and tell him that this is an important plan to set Michigan on the right path in terms of ethics and transparency, the more likely, you know, we'll get some pressure on Republican leaders in the Senate.
And the Senate Leader being?
His name is Arlen Meikoff. And I will tell you, our State Senator Vince Gregory has been a wonderful partner on this. So, we can call his office, and maybe he can say to the Senate Leader, here are a bunch of residents from Lathrop Village that want to see this type of transparency, or you can call the Senate Leader's office directly and let him know that this is the right thing to do. If 48 other states can figure out transparency, then surely in Michigan, you know, we can, we can figure it out as well. So, that's a plan that I've been working on, and it's kind of been something we've put a lot of effort on. And then lastly, the third, again, you know, I have an article here really from the Detroit News, I think, yeah, Detroit News, "Michigan Lawmakers Limp to Slow Start." So, the third of three major things that we've done since session started in January has been teacher pensions, which I'm sure you've heard a lot about.
Oh, I thought you were going to say, we've limped.
We've limped, yes, we're continuing to limp. It has been teacher pensions. And, you know, I can go into as much detail as you'd like, but I think the short of it is, is that, you know, you'll hear the talking point of, we have so much unfunded liabilities in our pension system in Michigan for teachers, that we don't know what to do with it. Well, we did something with it. About seven years ago, we closed the old system, which was accruing debt, and we opened up this new hybrid pension system, which our House Fiscal Agency, which is a nonpartisan agency like the Congressional Budget Office, said, this is a fiscally solvent plan, the system is funded, you did the right thing when you opened it up, and the leaders in the House and Senate are still pointing at this unfunded debt and are trying to blow up the plan that works. Now, the biggest problem with blowing up the plan that works is it will kick, it could kick new teachers off of the current pension plan and put them into a more of a 401K style, and all this would do was it would add startup costs to our budget to create a new plan, when the plan that we're villainizing has already been shut down. And I, Mr. Mayor, would like to put the money that we're reserving to starting a new plan into roads and infrastructure, and I've been saying, if you, if you have found money, you know, in Lansing that you're using to solve a fictitious problem, let's solve an actual problem of the same potholes or hot holes that Mayor Brock is driving over every single day. You know, so, you know, this is.
And you are, too.
I was going to say, I'm the one complaining.
Exactly. This is right. Councilwoman Stallings and I and all of us are driving over the same potholes. And so, you know, it's almost this frustration that we're letting our politics drive the policy, and I know nobody's shocked by that. I mean, that happens in Washington, it happens in Lansing, but I think there's so much rhetoric from one side against public education, specifically against public schoolteachers, and trying to claim that they don't deserve secure retirement, so we're going to attack their pension plan, even though the bad plan has been shut down, you know, we're letting the politics drive the budget when we have actual problems to resolve, like roads, like infrastructure, like other pocketbook issues that people rely on. So, that's the third major thing that we've done. It was a late vote. We have 108 legislators serving, so it takes 55 votes to pass anything, and this pension plan somehow cobbled together 55 votes, which means that all Democrats, 45 Democrats voted against it, and seven Republicans joined us in voting against this plan. So, you know, those are kind of the three major things, and they've fallen in every category. One thing was put up and it was contentious and it failed, one thing was put up and it was unanimous and it passed, and one thing was put up and it was contentious and it passed. So, it's been, it's, you know, I've seen it all, I guess, in the first six months. We're about to tackle our final budget tomorrow, and we'll see how late they keep us, but fortunately, I don't think revenue sharing is going to be reduced across the board. I offered an amendment to the budget to boost revenue sharing by five more percentage points than what we were used to. My amendment unfortunately failed. And then I'll close out, because I know my time probably is being overstayed a little bit. The two major things that I've been working on, aside from the Freedom of Information Act, is we've reintroduced our same legislation to prevent residential oil drilling because of our situation at Nine Mile and Evergreen last year, and I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, Southfield or Lathrop Village or any other community in Michigan that doesn't want oil drilling, you know, at the corner of two densely populated roads doesn't have to deal with that. So, we've reintroduced that. And then one other plan that, you know, I put it on Facebook, and I was actually very surprised at how excited people were about it. It's kind of a bill that I was happy to introduce, but I feel like people really resonate with this. It's House Bill 4465 that I introduced, and right now, when you pay your cable and utility bill and you're on a promotional rate, and when the promotional rate expires, let's say it ends in June of 2017, and all of a sudden in July, you're paying a much higher rate than you normally would, I just want to give residents notice within that same cable bill that, guess what, next month, if you don't call us and ask for a discounted rate or find out what other promotions out there, you know, that you should have the notice for it. So, we've introduced this bill that would require the utility company to put on the bill and the second-to-last bill before the rate expires, a notification that your rate is about to expire so that you don't, you have an unexpected increase. is about to expire so that you don't have an unexpected increase. I don't know that this is going to go anywhere in Michigan. However, the same bill that we drafted was introduced in the Illinois State Legislature. So, you know, at least maybe the legislation can take off somewhere else and then come find its way back to Michigan. So I guess those are my kind of brief, at a glance, things that we've been working on. Residents can reach out to me for any issue under the sun in state government, and we'll direct you to the right place. My office phone number is (517) 373-1788. Or toll-free, you can call (844) DIST, as for district, 035, D-I-S-T 035. And then you can email me at jeremymoss@house.mi.gov. So that is my report, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
I want to say that, thank you, Jeremy. Jeremy has been a champion for, along with a select number of other legislators from both sides of the aisle, really, who have come into state government after spending time in local elected offices in their cities or their villages or their townships, that understand the local problems and the local issues we have. And we need a lot more of you, actually.
We do, from both sides of the aisle, just as you said.
Yeah. And I've nibbled around the edges of Michigan politics for a long, long time, and I can tell you, there was a time, long, it was before term limits, actually, when legislators from both parties lived together well enough that they actually could talk to each other and make things happen for the good of the state of Michigan. And I've got to say that the ones we have elected from Southfield and our area around here, Lathrop and so on, have been of that mold. Our state senator has been, you know, a very reliable and solid voice for reaching across the aisle and working with his Republican colleagues and trying to get things down. Jeremy has followed, has that same mold that he operates within. The Michigan Municipal League, which is our, for villages and cities, does a lot of lobbying on our behalf to try and make sure that revenue sharing doesn't get worse. In fact, it should, they may have made the case, and they've been exposing it across the state as to how many millions and millions of dollars this legislature, this state government has underfunded local governments in terms of local revenue sharing over the last 20 years, for example. And it is, it's really a crime, because the deals that were struck way back then, that local governments wouldn't have the taxing authority over certain types of things, the state was going to do that, and in turn, the state was going to share their revenue with local governments. And of course, once that change was made, you had a baseline of support, and it just has chipped away over the last, especially in the last 15, 20 years. It's been an absolute crime. And that local revenue sharing that we get from the state of Michigan helps maintain Chief Joan, not Chief Jones, I'm going back a long time. The chief's police department helps maintain the contract we had with Southfield for police, not for police, but for fire and police dispatch. That's part of where that money comes from. It's not just the local village that we pay when you get your tax bill, but also it comes from, supposed to come, from state revenue sharing, because that was the deal they made with local governments and then welched on. And that is a, anytime I get a chance to get on that soapbox, I do, so I apologize.
I join you on it. You know, it's our tax dollars. We pay it to Lansing. And instead of it coming back home to our local units of government, when I was in the Southfield City Council, the first places that we would allocate revenue sharing that overperformed our projections would be to public safety and to local road construction. And, you know, instead, it gets lost in Lansing, or it's the first place that legislators chip away from, because it's not money that they have to deal with. So we've found a good group of folks from both sides of the aisle that have served in local units of government to hopefully continue to join us on this effort to make our local communities...
So whenever you see somebody running to succeed Jeremy, and I wanted to replace him, because he's doing a great job, find out if they're spending any time in local government, because that's the kind of voices we need representing us up there, so.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the job you do, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Anybody have any quick questions for Jeremy?
Well, and speaking of that, is there going to be any movement on term limits?
So we're heading in the wrong direction, I think.
All right.
We're heading in the wrong, this part-time legislature proposal, dig deeper into that. It's going to cause us a lot more problems than it is going to solve.
Part-time.
You add that on to, you add that on to term limits.
Yeah.
We will have, we will have the least impactful state legislature, and I think some people want that, you know. However, you know, don't expect much to get done then. You will not have a state government that will fund to solve problems then.
Well, the accountability leaves with the part-time.
Delegate most of the power to the administrative branch of government.
Unquestionably true.
Couldn't you do that?
I have a question. The residential oil drilling bill that you're working on, do you need letters from us on that as well?
Yeah, that would be helpful. So these bills, I introduced House Bill 4199, which would, if any outstate entity goes to the Department of Environmental Quality and wants to apply for a permit to drill for oil, we put three requirements in that before the permit would be issued by the DEQ. Number one, it has to meet a setback requirement. So it has to be, I think we put in 2,000 feet away from a residential dwelling. Right now, there's a setback for wetlands, but there's not a setback like that for people. So, you know, I think that our people should be just as protected.
They're replaceable.
We don't count. They're not as important as Moss.
As a frog is out there.
Jeremy Moss.
Yeah. And then number two, local control. Let's say in Southfield, we have zoning of where we're going to, where oil drilling could take place. Lathrop Village doesn't want it in a residentially zoned area, as I think is appropriate. It would allow the local ordinance to take precedence over the issuing of the permit. And then number three, a public hearing within the community before the permit is issued from the DEQ. We had one in Southfield. It was because we pressured them to do it, they had no obligation under law. And so those bills have been referred to committee. And so, yeah, if you want to contact my office, we can engage some folks to put some pressure to have them taken up.
And if you had a letter, if you had a, is there a letter, I can, letter written up already?
Yeah, Jason, he gave you some language of what we have.
For both of these, okay.
And just to give kind of the 30-second or 25-second update of what happened in Southfield, is we lost, we went to court, and we said that the permit was unlawful, because it superseded local ordinance. They were now in appellate court, so we did appeal the decision. But in the interim, they allowed for the exploratory drilling, they didn't find any oil worth extracting, then they found natural gas, then they didn't find enough worth extracting, so they closed up the well. So we lost, nothing ended up happening, but it's a bad precedent to set. I mean, the corner of Nine Mile and Evergreen is not, is a densely populated area, it's not a rural area, it's not set back. It's very concerning. If you can drill at Nine Mile and Evergreen, you could drill anywhere. And so, and it was a residentially zoned area, too, which is all the more alarming.
In order to give anyone else an opportunity to talk to, we, just one last plug I want to give you, and that is, for any of you who've got family members or issues with a state government agency, and you get, as I have a number of times, gotten fed up right up to your eyeballs with being able to communicate effectively, I can tell you that your state representative or your state senator's office can help you get their attention. May not get the results you want each and every time, but at least you get, can get yourself, help you get your point of view heard, or your concerns heard, or a question answered, or whatever, so.
That's what we're here for.
That's an awful lot of what your local representatives and their staffs do up in Lansing, is they do that kind of research, they get the answers that you have trouble getting out of the bureaucracy. So never be bashful about calling your state representative's office and asking, saying, "I need help with this issue," whatever.
That's right.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you very much.
And I would love to talk some more about some of these issues, but of course, we're running out of time.
Yeah.
But you hold regular coffee hours.
I do, I do. So typically, right before the Lathrop Village Council meeting starts, we're over in our library on Civic Center Drive. We're there from 5:30 to 7:00. So if you know of the Lathrop Village Council meeting happening, you can also sign up for Speed Blast to get information out, but we'll keep you capped right before you have to head to the council meeting here.
That'll keep you awake then during the...
Yeah, and we talk about any issue that's going on in Lansing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who would not like to be heard on any other issue? Please, if you'd step, give your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Annette Kingsbury, I live on San Jose Boulevard. And I came tonight to ask council to work with staff to make the city website more informative. If residents could find agendas, backup documents, minutes, and meeting videos reasonably easily, we could be more informed and not find out things that happen after the fact by reading media accounts or hearsay. As just one example, today at 5 o'clock, I looked for tonight's meeting agenda under the most recent agenda link. The agenda posted there was from November 7. The most recent minutes as of yesterday were October 3. I also tried the document search mechanism, it's terrible. Whatever you pay the consultants who recently redid the site, I'm not sure we got our money's worth, the site is woefully inadequate. In addition, there used to be a system of notifications where you could give your email address and ask to be notified on various subjects. It wasn't perfect, but it did work, and it seems to have disappeared, perhaps in the transition to the new website. I haven't had a notification in, I couldn't tell you how long. If you want to see what another small city has done, check out Huntington Woods' website. I only spent a few minutes on their site, but I was able to easily find agendas, packets, and minutes, going back three years, all on one page. Their meeting videos are available on demand, going back to 2015, and they have a notification system that includes meetings. I know personally, they're not the only city doing this. You have a new website, you already have your documents in digital form, all that is necessary is to merge the two. I realize it'll take some staff resources to get it started, but if you're interested in transparency and participation, which I certainly hope you are, this needs to be a priority for somebody.
I can assure you that we are definitely interested in it. Sean Cammer, who's in the audience right here, is kind of the guy that's trying to get that system working the way it's supposed to. So he's, I saw him listening attentively, so we will do that. However, I will say that for the most recent agenda and so on, we were still working on that whole thing because of other issues on as late as Saturday night and Sunday and even today. So we were running way behind getting this week's out there, so.
She talked about November.
Is the notification part, did that disappear somehow in this?
The website does not have a notification system.
Because that was something people could sign up for, and they were supposed to get notifications, so we all were sad.
So Sean, maybe we can call the website committee back together and maybe see what we could do. Okay?
Or just beat up on those guys till they do it.
Okay.
He's got a notification option, I don't think it's working, though.
It's not, it's not on there.
It has an option? I didn't even think it had an option.
I just assigned myself to get it, but I haven't received anything yet.
Yeah, no, thank you for those comments. It is a high priority, and it is absolutely something that we are all interested in getting done.
Yes. Yeah, if you give us your name and address for the record.
All right. Frank Solinsky, at 27835 Lathrop Boulevard. Have a couple of issues here. There's a construction project going on at the corner of Lathrop Boulevard and the freeway. Looks like it stalled, nothing's changed in that site for months. Wondering if anybody knew what was going on.
Talking about the exposed condominium development?
Right.
Phase one, phase two, and phase three.
Could you update us on that?
I can.
Sean.
Please.
No.
Why don't you give us your other, you want to give us the other item?
Sure, yep.
There we get you both answers.
The fencing that sides the crossing over the freeway at Southfield here, for a couple of years, there was a big dent in it, so we ran into it. But besides that, it's really ugly-looking cyclone fencing. There are some other crossings, like at Halsted Road and 696, there's a pedestrian crossing between Middle Belt and Inkster that has really nice wrought iron black fencing. It's very attractive, and I don't know how they can get away with having something so attractive, and we get stuck with something as ugly as that. So, I don't know, maybe you can work with Oakland County Road Commission, get something or MDOT.
I imagine it's MDOT, but we, one of those two.
Right. And, you know, snoop around, maybe we can get something a little more attractive than that, because that's just awful.
I agree with you on that.
The traffic signal at Southfield and 12 Mile doesn't allow for right-hand turns. It's really old traffic signaling. Even the signal at 13 in Southfield, it has green arrows for right-hand turns. At a smaller intersection at 12 Mile and Greenfield, it has green arrows, more sophisticated traffic signaling. This is a real busy intersection. I don't know why we don't have an updated traffic signaling system there. And again, this is probably Oakland County Road Commission, I would think.
We have to position Oakland County for that.
I don't know why they can't update that and give us better equipment. And the last thing is near and dear to my heart.
Three.
For the last nine months, I've been trying to get somebody to tuck point the barbecue in the picnic shelter. It's falling apart, the bricks are missing, can't seem to get anybody. I mean, even if you had a retired mason in the city, he could go up there in a couple hours and fix it.
I specifically asked for that project to be done several weeks ago and be scheduled and done, because we, in my discussions with city administration, they were aware of it, knew it had to be done, so let's get it done. So I will add to that, the roof on the gazebo probably needs new shingles, so.
Oh, and I might add, on the picnic shelter, it has eaves troughs along the side, because they've never been cleaned out, and as a result, the eaves underneath the picnic shelter are now falling apart and all rotting away, so.
That's right.
It looks really bad.
That was on the list I had, too, so thank you.
Mayor, I did, when it was first brought up about the fireplace, I did call three masonry's to come out and give me quotes, and nobody showed up, because it was such a small project.
Well, that's why a retired person could easily do it.
Yeah, and I don't know any retired masonry's.
Well, but there are, there are handyman services that do small projects, and there ought to be someone that's got...
I have people.
That's good enough to do that.
Well, I was giving names, too, from other people. I'm Italian, I got people.
Sean, do you have anything to add on those?
Yeah, I can respond to a few of the issues. Well, first, I want to actually thank Ms. Kingsbury and Mr. Solinsky for bringing up those really important points. Ms. Kingsbury's point, being addressed first, I, too, have had some frustrations with the website. I do know that the clerk diligently does post her agendas and minutes, and if you go on the website, there's a drop-down menu under, I believe, Government. And if you click on City Clerk, it will bring up a link to our document center, and that does bring up a list of all of the things that I know that she is very good about posting. And, you know, if you do have some time, I can show you how that does work. As for Mr. Solinsky's points of the, let's see, we talked about the bridge. I do believe that's an MDOT issue, but I'd be happy to work with you on that, if you'd love to show up to a design committee meeting sometime soon.
He's on a first-name basis with Oakland County Road Commission.
And then we can take it to them and see how we can fund it, but it'd be something I'd be really interested to tackle, because you're not the only one who has brought up those points, so.
And the construction.
The condominium.
The construction, yes. So a number of months ago, the contractor did, was required to go back to Planning Commission to renew their site plan. They ran into a number of issues relating to the utilities there. They had to replace a sewer line that they didn't anticipate having to do. In order to get to that, they had to rely on DTE to move a couple telephone and electrical wires, which I know actually took up months. wires, which I know actually took up months to wait for DTE to respond to that. I believe that they've moved those now, and they've begun work on the sewer line that had to be replaced, but they did come to Planning Commission having to renew their permits. So, now that these utility issues are being straightened out, they should be able to resume, and they should be able to finish within the next 12 months. So, thank you.
They have a 12-month, is that their deadline?
Yeah, a site plan has to be renewed if no action is taken on it every 12 months, so they had to come back to Planning Commission and actually update the commission on their progress, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Something funny about that.
Anyone else have another, any other questions for comments for council?
Anybody?
Yes, Bruce.
Hey, Bruce.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Bruce Copas, 28050 Woodworth Way, Lathrop Village. Good to know. I too was, went to the website, and I know the city hired a company to prepare it and make it better than what we had. Well, you failed, it sucks. If you can't find an agenda in, just by, because I did the same search, I got ads. My first options were going to ads. It's ridiculous. And we paid good, good money for this, and to call this an improvement is ridiculous. I want to say that tonight, I know on the agenda, Intern Chief McKee is up again to, the fact that he's still being considered and not hired is just, it's deplorable. I don't know what cement you guys have put your feet into, but it's an embarrassment. And then I go to the budget report, and we're down three officers, we're down part-timers, we have a reserve potential that we're not doing, and we have an intern chief that has his hands tied, he needs to do everything possible. I saw what he was doing in the report, it was, it's amazing what this individual's doing and being shunned every month by you by not bringing him aboard. And then we had, of course, the fiasco of the city manager. You know, we have a description for what entails a city manager, and yet it took seven months to fail in delivering what the, his job description was. He needed managerial skills, none, financial abilities, none, ability to communicate with residents, apparently not so. And now we have someone sitting in the acting city administrator who was a finalist. I just cannot imagine that, I thought it'd be on the agenda tonight. I thought you guys would pull the trigger and say, enough of this nonsense, let's put the city straight and narrow and bring Pam Barachi aboard, where she should have been to begin with. But certainly, you know, I don't know what other deliberation he needs, she was a finalist, the pick was poor, you've got the best candidate in the office, has the managerial skills, has the financial ability to do what she did. Just, and then I happened, you know, you've got to be me to actually do this. I pulled up the approved city budget. And, you know, I'm looking through the, the first part's okay, it's all bullet point. So apparently he can copy and paste. But then when it got actually down to, where you could see his language being implemented into the budget, and you approved this. There was run-ons, there was typos, there was, in his bullet point section under his conclusion, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bullet points that say nothing. He talks about the rent committee, you're going to do a better job, including bringing aboard these, to include extra projects or extra activities, and then he just lists what we're doing. Talks about the need for the farmer's market, well, yeah, well, yeah, that's nothing new. Doesn't even mention the master plan. Where's the, we talked about the intern police chief, and that was back then, and how poorly staffed we are in the police. You know, we're, you know, us residents, you know, we depend on the police department to protect us, and yet we're down part-timers, we're down full-timers, and the fact that we can work with reserves hasn't apparently hit the radar yet. He talked about a sanitary seal system that was reviewed in 2003, and there was a five-year plan, well, that's ending, but there's nothing about doing anything about it. Well, thanks for that bullet point. Code enforcement, this was one of my favorites. I guess this is, I won't even start at the beginning of the sentence, because the sentence starts two lines up, but then he talks about, currently Lathrop has very few problem areas in code enforcement, I suspect that a few people out here would disagree. However, a few code issues have been identified, seem to impact many of our citizens and business properties repeatedly. And then he goes on.
And they are.
Yeah, or what are you going to do, or what's, what's the game? I guess conclusions usually add something to, and then, of course, the typos were just... Oh, and then his closing statement, whether it can continue, and he's talking about the challenges that face Lathrop, will unfold in the coming days, months, and days? I don't know if he's talking about his career or the challenges that we're facing Lathrop. And then I just started going briefly through the actual document itself, and he lists that we're decreasing our CBD grants by $3,000, you know, we get six grand a year, and then he puts it back in on the other part, so somewhere along the line, $3,000 has disappeared. But the largest item that just, it appears that we are digging into our reserves for $117,000 for this budget, to make this budget balance. Is that the reading that I get? Okay.
That's approximately correct.
He talks about how state revenue sharing's up, you know, thanks to gentlemen like Jeremy Moss. Our property values are coming around, we have a 3.9% increase in taxable values, and yet we're dipping into our reserves, and we haven't done that...
Because we have an unexpected amount of seven, almost 800,000 we have to put into roads that are, it's called Evergreen Road Project.
Well, why isn't it stated in here?
Well, I don't know why he didn't state, but I can tell you, that's why it's, we're dipping into the fund balance. We basically depleted...
It simply is not registered in this document.
Depleted all of the fund balances for the most part, because of that one project from road fund balances. And we're dipping into the general fund budget to continue our local, be able to finish up this year's local street funding. So, you know, we felt that was important, that we funded, so that's why we're utilizing fund balances.
So, are major street funds are depleted then?
They will be. As that project moves forward through the next few months to completion, we will receive regular bills to pay for our portion of Evergreen Road.
Says here, our fund balance now is $208,000 after this budget year. We couldn't have dipped into it a little bit more. I mean, these are the questions that, you know...
You're talking about, which fund balance you're talking about?
Major streets.
Well, major streets we can't use for local streets for the most part.
No, we're talking about Evergreen, right?
Evergreen, we're using, we're using most of it for that.
That's a major street.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's where it's going. But anyway, in response to your statement, the city council, in its wisdom, terminated the employment of the city administrator.
I understand that, and...
So, we're moving on and going to get these things done, they have to be done.
But we still had an open public meeting with the budget as well, right? And it would have been really good if you had looked before.
True, but you know, I count on the people that I elect to make these decisions.
I have a, we can get you a packet, by the way, so you can run for reelection. We'd love to have you back on.
Those, those of us who had the pleasure of working with you...
Yeah, during budgets, yeah. Enjoy that.
I appreciate that you are active and interested, and I appreciate and accept all of your comments.
For everybody's information, he's also a member of our planning commission.
And would love to have...
So we haven't lost his talents altogether, as you can tell.
Yeah, they welcome me with open arms too, so...
They do?
Anyway, I truly believe that the person that needs to be appointed on a full-time basis...
We appreciate your viewpoint, and we're...
And I hope you make the right decision, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard this evening? There are none, we will move on.
We've got one more, we've got another one.
All right, all right.
I already took care of one of mine. Living so close to 11, Debbie Hootland Dunn, 27440 Lathrop Boulevard. Mr. Moss, I'm one of those residents that used to be very involved in my state, but with the federal chaos, I have too many phone calls to make. And I am very sorry, no, truly, because I know you're doing hard work, and with the federal chaos, I have really let that slip.
Keep us in your minds, too, in your mind.
I have asked before, there is, there was an accident at 11 Mile and Lathrop Boulevard. It's been over a year now, there was a no-left-turn sign there, I don't know where it falls under, but there's no sign there anymore, so the, where you would be getting onto 696 there to go eastbound, there is supposed to be a no-left-turn sign at Lathrop Boulevard. And I'm really afraid that there's going to be another accident there, because the sign is gone and people are starting to turn left there.
Wow.
I feel like what she's talking about, Chief.
I know exactly what he's talking, I didn't realize the sign was gone, but that's something I can look at.
Is that, is that one of our signs, or would that be a coincidence?
That's what, I wasn't sure if it's...
I would have to look at it, because that was the talk about filling the potholes on 11 Mile. We went through Oakland County and realized it's actually our responsibility to fill the potholes, so I'm starting to, I believe that it probably is our responsibility to replace the sign as well.
And then, my other question is, after being at the meeting last week, I've been on executive boards, served on nonprofit boards, but I'm not familiar with city council rules. And I was wondering if there is anything, when a person stands up to speak, I am all for free speech, but when a person starts to speak about someone defaming a city council member, and it has absolutely nothing to do with what is going on for the evening, I'm not sure, can we write something? Is that really what free speech is about? I just, I mean, and I was so appalled, I didn't know if there was something that we could say or do.
I think we were all equally appalled, and I would...
Is there something that can be written?
We attempted to stop that every, you know, so it didn't get too out of hand, but I would ask the city attorney on the subject of free speech.
Unfortunately, free speech doesn't come with guidelines, and during the public comment, the public is free to speak on anything they wish. That doesn't mean that what was said or implied may or may not have some legal consequences separately from the individual who was spoken about, but there is no, there are no restrictions that we can place on the public's right to speak unless they become disruptive and disrupt the meeting, at which point then they can be asked to leave.
Okay.
I did ask the attorney that was here in your place if we could stop, he said that there was nothing, we had to let it roll, but I think what we could do better at...
I trained Matt Quinn well then, so...
Well, that was two minutes ago, you were the last one.
What we could do better at is the three-minute, you know, where the three-minute have a bail or something, or have the gong guy come out and hit whatever.
Hit a gong.
But we definitely need to have that three-minute rule.
Well, and I wondered if someone from the audience could speak up and just say, you know, this is ridiculous, or...
Yes.
I think somebody did.
And in all fairness, we had, we had several members of the council, not council, but of the audience that evening, who expressed how appalled they were...
Yes.
At the lack of professionalism of the individuals, I think I know who you're referring to, and the personal slanderous types of things they allowed themselves to regale us all with, which I think I made the comment after, is one of the saddest nights of my life.
You did.
Because I have never seen such behavior from people in this town before. And that's not what Lathrop is, and it's not what we are. And admittedly, the persons that were on display vocalizing at the loudest, at least one of them was not a resident...
Right.
Is a business owner in this town, but, you know, for whatever, it was just very, very demeaning and sad for me to listen to at all. We did, I did cut a couple of those speakers off who were determined to not give us three minutes, but 10 times that if they could, and...
But I do think we could...
And we did, we did prevent them from repeating, because a couple of them tried to do that a second time.
Right, yes, yeah.
But I was very gratified during that meeting to have residents say, how dare you, you know, do this to our city, you know, by, and claim that you're a part of the city, you know, so it was, that was, to me, was the redeeming voices I heard that night. And those people are, I'm forever indebted to their, their use of their free speech to stand up to that kind of rhetoric and bullying as far as I was concerned.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so we, I was proud of those people very much for speaking up. And I did receive afterwards some emails from other business people in this community who said how appalled they were at the lack of professionalism of a couple of their colleagues. So, you know, you don't, I don't even want to see us paint our business community with that brush, because it was a very small minority that decided they were going to use that type of tactic, so...
Okay.
I think we can be proud of most of our business community as standing up for the ideals that we think are important for Lathrop Village, so...
Alrighty.
So, we agree with your comments, I think without a doubt.
No, I knew, I knew you did, I just wondered if there was...
Next time we'll have the cards, you can hold up one minute and all of that, and really do it, do it professional.
And a hook.
The other thing I would say is, you know, traditionally, and I can be blamed, because I run most of these meetings, or attempt to, is that we tend to be pretty informal.
Right.
We have allowed people to speak in places where normally, in most towns, they wouldn't let you get up and talk at that point, it'd be over, you're supposed to keep quiet after that. We've always been informal enough and, you know, had the kind of relationship with our citizens that we feel comfortable doing that.
Right.
And we sure didn't feel comfortable doing it this last time, so, anyway. So, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Thanks, Debbie.
Yes, another Copas.
Yeah.
Colin, how are you?
I'm all right, how are you?
Good, good, welcome.
I'm Colin Copas, 18139 Avila. I want to complain about the light at 11 in Southfield. Going southbound, you have three lanes going straight, one which ends right after the intersection, and one turning right. People in that second to right lane turn right all the time anyway.
All the time.
They're not supposed to, that's right.
Right, well, it's not, I mean, it's marked, but it's not super clearly marked.
No, but there's directional stuff there.
Sure, sure, but why not just have two right turn lanes?
There used to be.
You know, it just makes more sense.
Well, not in my time, I don't remember it ever.
Oh, yeah, no, there used to be.
But anyway, Oakland County changed that configuration a number of years ago when they were reworking that intersection.
Sure.
And...
Well, all it wants is it to be either better marked or two right turn lanes.
We'll ask them to look at it, we'll, we have other issues we're going to ask them about, so we'll add that to it.
Right on.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for all your comments, and thank you for being here and being patient and sharing your thoughts with us, we do appreciate it, believe it or not. Believe it or not, we do. Moving on then, onto, we normally, this will be a point if we had any public hearings to conduct, those will be conducted this time, we have none. So this evening, we'll move on to our action requests. The first is, the city council consider a motion to reappoint members, the historic district commission. And there is an item in your packet, I think it's on page 45.
Yep.
Talks about the reappointment of Joanne Andres and Robert Tomke to the historic district commission.
Are either of them here?
I don't think either one of them are here this evening.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Joanne Endress and Robert Tomke to the historic district commission.
They have served, I understand.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next is the consideration of a motion to approve the local road improvement matching fund pilot program cost participation agreement. How's that for a lot of words?
Wow.
For the audience's benefit, this is Oakland County Road Commission normally allocates money for, you know, improving county roads within local jurisdictions and so on. That comes from what the county gets back in terms of Act $51, which is your gas tax money that you pay every time you go to the pump, finding its way back to the local county. The Oakland County Road Commission, a couple of years ago, began a pilot program in which they allocate a certain pot of money that they then, then provide to the road commission to participate in local road funding in the local municipalities. And this is, I think, our second or third year that we've participated in that, and what this, this is on page 47 in your packet, council members. The, we did apply for participation in that pilot road applicant, or road improvement project again this year, and we have a cost participation agreement we have to agree to sign and return to Oakland County in order for us to actually receive those dollars locally. So that's what this action is about. It's a huge amount of money, by the way, it's about $8,000, is it?
Almost, almost nine.
Almost $9,000. And it's going to one of our local roads, which is the.
Eldorado.
Eldorado Place from Golden Gate Drive West to California Drive Southwest is the street that is being assisted with the county dollar system.
Well, can I make?
Council?
I make a motion to approve the cost participation agreement for the 2017 pilot road improvement program and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in flavor, in flavor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Next item is a tabled item, which is a consideration of extending a contract with Lathrop Services LLC. This is the company that we contract with for our DPS services, so we need, first of all, a motion to move this item from the table.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, remove the item from the table, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. So, the proposed contract, which is on page 61 in your packet, it begins there, encompasses a 2.5% increase for the year, fiscal year 2017-18, and also it makes one other change to the contract, I believe, which includes the picking up of roadkill. Can I put that in there as being definitively a service that they are supposed to provide to us? So, that has not been in the contract before, and every once in a while, we say we go pick that up, and I'm not sure they want to pick it up, so. Now we've removed the doubt, it is part of the job, so. So entertain a motion?
I'll take, I'll make a motion to approve the 2017-18 amendment to the master service agreement with Lathrop Services LLC at 2.5% increase and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. The next is also a tabled item, and this is the consideration of the appointment of the permanent police chief for the city of Lathrop Village. I will just say that the reason this is, was tabled, has been tabled, has nothing to do with the qualifications of and/or the service that has been rendered by our current interim chief. The dispute over this really came from the fact that the council had asked as a matter of doing due diligence to have the position posted for a period of time to compare the qualifications of our interim chief with anyone else that might be, that might have chosen to apply. That is the reason when the city administrator brought that contract to the council, that it was tabled, and that's why it's there tonight. The posting that was agreed to expires the 24th of this month, so this will be a matter that the council will be taking up for decision-making very soon. So, it is an item that's tabled, I would ask if there's a motion to remove it from the table, if not, it will remain tabled to our next regular meeting, which I'm hoping we will be in a position to be in a decision-making mode at that one. And to make, just very clear, we think the interim chief has been doing a very fine job, and we're, we're fans, not opponents, so just so, you know.
It doesn't show.
It doesn't show.
No.
You didn't see the cheerleading section?
We applaud him all the time, we really do appreciate Scott.
We do appreciate it.
And you know that, don't you?
In fact, I, I.
He knows that.
I will say that he has taken hold of issues that we discovered after, during this transition, and has made it his business, whether he was, had the title of interim, or the title of permanent, or whether he had the title of lieutenant, he was going to get those things fixed, and he's been doing a great job of that, and we appreciate it, so. At a, at any rate, council, what is your pleasure then to leave this item on the table for now?
I think for those reasons, yes.
Okay. Moving on then to, there is a grouping of city budget amendments, and I would call on our treasurer, the illustrious Pam Brachi, to present those to us. I don't know what I just did with mine, I think they're here. Oh, here, here, they're here.
Mayor and council, at this time of the year, every year, we have to go and adjust our budgets to either to increase our revenues that we have not accounted for, or to increase or decrease our expenditure line items. I have prepared budget amendments for the fiscal year of six, or 1617, and Sean Cameron from the DDA director has also submitted his budget amendments for the DDA this year.
Okay.
Bruce, did you get a chance to see those? Would you like to see them?
Be happy to share them with you. You've been here when we've done it before. We always make these adjustments at the end of the year in order to be prepared for the city audit, which always follows immediately upon the closing of this fiscal year, so.
Okay.
So we went over.
Is there a suggested motion?
Well, there's.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, there, you know, we went over these in, in study session, and there, there was a typo that.
One adjustment, it was under police forfeiture state. The actual came in at $5,316, and I typed $53,126.
We were very excited.
And we got really excited for a minute.
And they made me back it down, Scott, sorry.
And the chief was out busy, trying to suspend it right away, but unfortunately, we had to tell him. We had to tell him it was illusory, it wasn't really there.
Sometimes fat fingers get in the way.
Is there a recommended motion for that, Mr. City Attorney?
Language, where are we?
Because we didn't have a prepared motion.
There's, there's no language, you just approved the budget.
Approved the budget amendments for 2016-17 as submitted.
Did somebody so move?
The city council by June, on June 19, 2017. And the, which includes the DDA budget amendments also for that same date.
So moved.
Second, do we need to correct the typo?
I think you got it, I think you got it already.
It was corrected in the study session.
Oh, thank you.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. And finally, in the nature of a kind of a emergency, or true, I don't know if it's true emergency.
Yet another.
Another emergency is, our DPS has informed us, contracted that all of, all of the equipment we use, whether it's on roads or whatever, still belongs to the city of Lathrop Village. While the services are provided by a contracted service, they are utilizing our equipment, and we have maintained ownership of that equipment, we keep, we make sure it stays in good repair, et cetera. We are in a situation where our mower that we use for mowing all the big public areas in the city is kaput. It is.
Spitting out oil.
It's sitting somewhere where, with a wreath on its hood or something, but at any rate, it needs to be replaced. We have replaced the motors twice before, Pam?
Twice before, and the machine is 14 years old.
And the, the machine itself is 14 years old. We, we utilize for these types of equipment, we use the state bidding process, and the suggested motion we discussed in the study session was to authorize expenditures not to exceed $10,000 to replace this.
Right.
Piece of equipment. Is there a maker of such a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion, but I, I thought not to exceed.
Not to exceed $10,000.
To replace and/or at the discretion.
Discretion of the city administrator.
To, if, if the determination was made that it is in fact feasible to, and, and desirable to fix, they can do that also, and/or replace if, if need be. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate.
Wait, so, one second.
Does the bid have to be waived on this one? If it is over the.
We're utilizing the state bid.
Okay, okay.
That's what we're utilizing. So we're not waiving a bid process.
Okay.
We're utilizing the state bid, and we've done that with other major pieces of equipment.
All right.
We do it for police cars, it's, for example, et cetera. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Pam, do you have any issue or other points that you wanted to share with council this evening?
No, I just want to say that summer in the village was a great time, and I'm glad to see all of the residents that did come out and the people that were here for it, and I hope next year we have an even bigger crowd. And the volunteers that helped were a great help, they worked very hard for the summer in the village this year.
Thank you.
We're very proud of them.
I would ask city attorney if he's, well, go ahead.
No, no, I, I agree.
City attorney, do you have any updates of legal interest?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Are there any unfinished or new business items the council wished to bring up this evening?
I just have a question, couple of questions. For instance, the lighting, lighting law, whatever that we voted on, is that being implemented? There were a couple of things.
The ordinance on, on lighting.
The ordinance, yes. How is that being implemented? Or is it?
When did that go into effect? It had so many days.
My recollection is, it was published May 1, and it was effective seven days after publication.
Okay.
I think that, can you confirm that?
So enforcement, enforcement falls to the city building official?
It's a general ordinance, so it would, police department can enforce it.
And so he is there, they and the police department are both aware of that and?
Both.
He is now.
It's typically, it's not my area, but I, I can definitely find out.
Typically, Mr. Wright would enforce it, but because we did, we did amend the, the general police power ordinance, it could be enforced.
Tell him we don't want to be calling him Mr. Wrong, so he should start enforcing it.
So we have a two-pronged, you know, approach to attacking this now. We have the police and the building, so we're going to get this taken care of.
Yeah, we do.
And.
All right.
I need to have another question.
At this point, we're at a point in the city council meeting where we wish to go into closed session in order to consult with the city attorney on a legal issue that's a federal lawsuit that's been brought against the city. And I should report, people, some, some people earlier had asked a question about certain police positions not being filled. There's a reason why a couple of those cannot, have not been able to be filled up till now, and one is, is that we have a couple of officers who are not working, but are still on the force from the standpoint of union and everything else. I'm looking at our labor attorney who's sitting back there. So it is based on that that we are wanting to have, we're going to go into closed session for a brief time to receive a report and an update from the, our labor attorney on those particular issues, where we would like to be able to fill those vacancies we have with full-time officers as soon as we can, so. Maybe we'll have more to report on that in the near future. So I would entertain a motion to recess and go into closed session for the purpose of, of receiving a report on the federal lawsuit against Lathrop Village from Gorbey, Charmigan, and Rucker, and Gorbey arbitration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Roll call. Yeah, roll call.
Roll call vote. Oh, you're so busy, can't react to me.
Mayor Brown?
Present, yes, present.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes, present.
And Councilmember Stalin?
Yes.
Motion carries to go into closed session.
Thank you all for being here. We, we will come back out into regular session for the purpose of adjourning or taking, we cannot take any action